Okay, our meeting is already in order because you're non-public before that, so if you would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You would be ready to move on?
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, now we have two donations.
Okay, two, there's only two donations instead of one donation. Um, is the donation line, I don't know, the superintendent's report?
Mr. Chair, I have an item I would like to add.
Katie Charley.
To the agenda. In accordance with policy B E D D A, I'd like to add a motion to reconsider policy D B J at the end of my academic affairs committee report. D B J. Yeah. Delta, Bravo, um, Julian.
Yep. Okay, all the board members okay with that? Okay? Katie Charley, you have the actual title of that policy, I'm sorry.
Yes, Transfer of Appropriation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, it looks like the next item on the agenda is the T C S two presentation. Who is your principal? Oh, she's right there, you're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Always a pleasure to have you here at T C S, we appreciate that. And not on a stormy icy night either, so even better. Uh, we're thrilled to have you here, and here at Tucktaw Ro Central School, um, we have lots of great things going on. I know that you just heard the state of the schools this past Saturday, so you're probably thinking we're up to date. And you might be, that that might be true, but I do want to share just a few highlights here from T C S while you are here visiting us. Here at T C S are four school habits. You may have noticed them if you drive by on our fence. They're bright and colorful in our school colors. That's to be ready, a thinker, considerer, and a contributor. And those reflect really the culture that we have in our school every day. They're seen in our cab, halls, our buses. You can actually see in each building our matrix of our school-wide habits and what maybe some of those things to be ready or thinker, considerer, contributor look like in all different areas of the school. So those are things we really kind of live and breathe each day. And again, I'm thrilled that we were able to, upon the finances, actually put them out on our fence this year for the community to share as well. We're consistently looking to find ways to help our students here at T C S. So in addition to our academic model intervention, a response intervention, reading, and math, we're also focusing here at T C S on success skills and behavior data. So success skills would be skills that such as students understanding perspective of others, forming capacity for empathy, creating healthy friendships, and positive decision-making. And we really feel like those skills help to create better, stronger learners also. We also proudly offer a great amount of schools and clubs, um, after-school activities, which is great. We have our art club, our Lego club, yoga. We have our Girls on the Run chapter, which of course is a national organization. Uh, we have our chess club. We welcome our hiking and drum club later this year. So I do want to say before our welcome our two students here that, um, you probably hear all the time about what great staff we have here in Governor Wentworth. I really want to close today by telling you that I can't speak highly enough of the staff that we have here at Tucktaw Ro Central School. Um, they really work tirelessly to meet the needs of students. I think everybody here works 120% of their capacity all of the time um, in such a warm and engaging manner. The connections they go with students and the flexibility and the growth mindset that they have is is really admirable. And I am proud to work with them every day. I'm proud that they're a part of our district, very much so. So again, thank you for all that you do, and thank you for being here at T C S this evening. I'm going to toss it over to, uh, this Hill, who's going to introduce our two students?
Thank you, Katie. Good evening. Tonight's presentation is by two learners in Ms. Thompson's fifth grade class. Her students are currently working toward the following social studies competency. Evaluate the interactions among explorers, colonists, and Native Americans. Before they can do that larger piece, they must do some smaller tasks. Some specific learning targets within this competency include recognizing and using specific vocabulary related to Native American culture groups, identifying different Native American regions and some tribes within those regions, and describing Native American culture and ways of life. Her students are going to share how they began with reading about each of the culture regions and identifying the regions on the map. Next, students use online resources to determine the meaning of specific vocabulary. Later, students use Gail resources to explore Native American tribes that they would be interested in researching to determine more about their cultures and ways of life. This information will tie into their formative writing prompt in which students will use the information to describe a place with life in a specific Native American tribe. I'd like to welcome Ms. Thompson, Naomi, and Ryan to share some of the work they've completed along their journey to proficiency.
Hello, my name is Naomi, and I'm a fifth grade student at T C S. Please take a look at the packet with Naomi at the top for reference as I talk. Recently, we have started learning about Native Americans. We began by reading informational texts about different Native American regions. Then we worked on placing regions on a map along with other landmark features such as oceans, rivers, and mountain ranges. We will continue adding more information to this map as we learn about the 13 original colonies and settlement patterns in the U-United States.
My name is Ryan. To follow up along in my packet as I talk, check out the packet with Ryan at the top. We created our maps, but we found definitions for vocabulary words such as indigenous, culture, and tradition. Specific Native Ameri- wait. Tradition and other online resources. We are now in the process of researching a specific Native American tribe and writing about what their name might look like. I chose the Trippassau tribe because I thought it was interesting that they lived in what is now Mississippi. Some things I've learned about this tribe are that they live wooden homes made that were made, built using mud and straw. Different aspects of culture, including hunting, fishing, farming, and making clothes. My favorite thing I've learned so far is that they ate foods such as corn, beans, and squash, not better than the three sisters.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the review of the new board meeting rules that Dr. Eric Kelly brought to us.
Thank you. This, uh, policy was, um, approved, uh, at the last meeting. This is Board Meeting Rules of Procedure and Order, B E D D A, and, um, reading them out loud for the board and the community. The purpose of this policy is to help promote effective and efficient board meetings. General principles. One, meeting rules should facilitate rather than inhibit the board's deliber- deliberation and decision-making process. Thank you, students. The rules should be readily understandable and help keep meetings free from procedural quagmires. Two, all board members have equal rights, privileges, and obligations in the deliberative and decision-making process. Meeting rules should help ensure that each member is able to participate in the debate and that no single member is able to dominate discussion to the exclusion of other members. Three, every board member and the public in attendance has the right to hear what is going on at all times. Four, a meeting can deal effectively with only one specific matter at a time. Five, members have a right to know beforehand what they will be discussing and/or voting upon, and to receive materials at least five business days prior to the meeting whenever possible, with the exception of emergency meetings. Six, a school board meeting is a meeting in which the board conducts its business. While board meetings are open to the public, except as provided under RSA 91 dash A colon two and three, board meetings are not public hearings where the public has the right to speak. Public comment at board meetings shall be governed by board policy B E D H. B, meeting rules. One, the board chair shall preside over all meetings of the board. In the chair's absence, the vice chair will preside, followed by the most senior member then present. Two, by majority vote, the board can overrule any ruling of the presiding officer regarding the application of these rules. A board member can raise such a request by a quote "point of order", followed by a motion with respect to the specific decision. Three, any board member may make adjustments to the agenda with the consent of the majority, whether by vote or otherwise. Four, all speakers should be courteous and should speak on the issue then under discussion, not to the individuals raising them. Five, each board member has the right to participate in discussion and debate if they wish before any other member may speak a second time. Six, no one may speak unless they have been recognized by the presiding officer. A board member may interrupt only to state a quote "point of order", quote "a point of information" or quote "a point of inquiry". The presiding officer will then recognize the member for the limited purpose of stating the point of order, et cetera. Seven, the presiding officer may decide on their own initiative or upon request by a board member to recognize a non-board member to address the board with respect to the matter then under discussion. Eight, agenda items requiring action by the board should be preceded by a specific motion, clearly articulated, followed by a second. Motion should address only one issue or idea. If a motion is complex or has conditions, the motion should be written out and read back by the board's minute taker. Nine, if a motion does not receive a second, then the motion is treated as if it were not considered by the board. Such a matter may be raised again at a later date in accordance with the board's agenda, policy, and rules. Ten, when a motion is on the floor, no new topic should be debated, and no new motions will be accepted, other than the following motions addressing the main motion or the meeting itself. Eleven, as provided under RSA 91 dash A colon two, two for open sessions, and 91 dash A colon three, three for non-public sessions, no vote may be taken by secret ballot. Twelve, the presiding officer should, in accordance with the duties of all board members, vote on every issue. Thirteen, no item may be discussed or decided upon in non-public session except as provided under RSA 91 dash A colon two and three. Fourteen, abstentions are noted and counted, but do not affect the outcome of the vote. Fifteen, motions for reconsideration are not favored except when new circumstances exist or perceived error has been made. Motions for reconsideration may only be raised at the same meeting as the original decision by a person who voted in favor of the original motion. Motions for reconsideration at a later meeting may only be considered when approved by a three-fifth supermajority and only when the proposed motion is posted with the agenda for the subsequent meeting. Only one motion for reconsideration on an issue may be made at a meeting later than the meeting at which the original decision was made, irrespective of whether the first motion for reconsiderat- reconsideration is successful. This provision shall only apply to the board as constituted as of the date of the original decision. Sixteen, the presiding officer may rule any member of other person or other person out of order if such person disrupts the orderly conduct of a meeting, behaves in a disorderly manner, makes unlawful threats, willfully violates any of the above rules of order or procedure, or engages in any unprotected speech. If if the board member or other person continues such behavior after being ordered by the presiding officer to cease, the presiding officer is authorized to request that a police officer warn and then remove such person from the meeting and meeting location. Seventeen, all votes will be taken by roll call. Eighteen, the board may suspend parts of this policy at any time in accordance with this policy. And finally, there are, um, motions, um, there's a chart with motions, whether they're debatable and votes required to pass. To amend a motion, it is debatable, 51% required to pass. To limit the time limits on the debate, um, or number of times each member may address the motion, it's non-debatable, and two-thirds of the votes are required to pass. To call the question or close the debate, it's non-debatable, and two-thirds of vote are required to pass. Uh, refer to committee, it is debatable, 51% required to pass. Postpone to a later time or day, uh, yes, debatable, 51% of votes required to pass. Postpone an item indefinitely or kill the motion, yes, it's debatable, 51% of the votes required to pass. To recess, it's non-debatable, 51% of the votes required to pass. To adjourn, it is non-debatable, 51% votes required to pass. To suspend the rules, yes, it's debatable, two-thirds of the vote required to pass. And finally, a a motion to vacate the chair or vice chair, it is debatable, and, uh, two-thirds of the votes are required to pass. And that's the end of the policy that was adopted on January 8th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next, uh, next item on the agenda, um, are the acceptance of minutes. Uh, the first set of minutes that I'm looking for a, uh, a motion to approve would be the minutes of October 17th. What are your motion?
Some move.
It's moved by Brody.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mary.
Discussion.
Yes. Uh, Charley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we go to the, um, the sentence that starts, "Board Chair, Mr. Whitmer made a statement regarding legal matters", I would like to delete "legal matters" and replace that with "current affairs", as was stated at our January 8th meeting.
Do I hear any objections to making that change to current affairs? Okay, uh, that change then will be made to the, uh, to my comments where it says "made a statement regarding current affairs as opposed to legal matters". Any other discussion on this particular, uh, minutes?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Tom.
I'd like to, uh, sorry. I'd like to clarify, um, my objection. That I made at the, um, October 17th meeting, and I thought it had been a corrective, uh, class meeting, but I apparently didn't do a very good job. So, in the non-public session minutes, I would like the minister to reflect that Mr. Victor objected to the discussion on the behavioral intervention team and the school resource officers in the non-open session because topics did not fall within the exceptions of RSA 91A3, um, Omen 02, C, and I concerning personnel and legal matters. In the public meeting minutes, I'd like to reflect that Mr. Victor objected to the discussion of two topics in the non-public session that did not fall within the exceptions of RSA 91A3, Omen 02, C, and I concerning personnel and legal matters. And under paragraph, um, title of discussion, Mr. Victor explained that initially he voted no as he thought the motion was to see a non-open minutes. That was consistent with his objection to discussing those topics in the non-public status paper. But then, when he realized the motion was to return the public to public session, he requested that his vote be changed to yes. And that's it. And I sent a, um, copy to the superintendent and the administration.
Okay, Kathy, do you have that information that Tom sent? Okay, any objection to those changes that, uh, Tom has already sent into the S E U office? Okay, uh, hearing on all those in favor of then approving the minutes of, uh, the 10-17 meeting with the corrections as specified. Tom?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Abstained.
Uh, Jim Pippen?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Talkative.
Yes, that would be yes, okay. And Chair votes yes on that, okay. Uh, the next set of meetings to approve is the, uh, January school board meeting, um, January 8th. Uh, what are your motion to approve January 8th school board meeting?
Some move.
Moved by Brody.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jim Pippen. Any discussion or changes, modifications? Okay, uh, can we, uh, take one down?
Just one minor one, um, page six, um, under discussion after the second motion. So where it says "school board spokesperson for articles", um, Mr. Whitmer volunteered to represent the budget warrant article, Ms. King volunteered to represent, it just says capital reserve warrant article because we have two, I just clarified it was maintenance, um, capital reserve warrant article for that one.
Okay, you have that change? Yes, Kathy? Okay, great. Okay, any other changes on the, uh, January 8th meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll take a roll call vote on that as well. Uh, Tom?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Abstained.
Jim Pippen?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. Okay, the next, uh, next set of minutes are for the academic affairs committee on January 17th. The members present were Brody, Dr. Jim, Charlene, and Mary. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Seconded.
Moved by Brody, seconded by Dr. Jim. Any discussion on the academic affairs minutes? Okay, hearing none by those, uh, four members. Brody?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Uh, Charlene?
Aye.
And Mary?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the next set of minutes are the minutes of the building and maintenance committee meeting on January 18th. Members present at that meeting were Brody, Stephanie, and Jim Pippen. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Seconded.
Moved by Jim Pippen, seconded by Brody. Okay, any changes on those minutes? Okay, all those in favor that were attended, uh, Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And, uh, Jim Pippen?
Yes.
Okay, the final approval tonight is on the, uh, manifests. The manifest being signed this evening accounts payable manifests a total of $2,251,102.45. The payroll manifest being signed $856,124.53. Total manifest being signed this evening are $3,107,226.98. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some move.
Moved by Charlene?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Jim. Okay, all those in favor of approving the manifest as presented. Um, Tom?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Jim Pippen?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. Okay, uh, we're finished with that. Uh, next thing on the agenda is, um, public input. So if anyone would like to speak this evening, uh, please come up to the center mic here and, uh, we'll recognize your state, your name, and town that you're from. Uh, we'll have additional public input at the end of the meeting as well for anyone who would like to speak at the end of the meeting. Okay, seeing none at this point, uh, we will move on to the student representative report. Elliot.
Thank you very much. Um, it's the beginning of a new semester at Kingswood Regional High School. I spoiled it. Uh, beginning of a new semester, uh, here at Kingswood Regional High School, uh, but despite that, actually not the busiest month in the world, uh, Kingswood, so a little, little bit of a shorter report. Uh, this week, uh, boys' basketball will play, we'll be playing at Manchester West on Tuesday and at home versus Conval on Friday. Uh, girls' hockey will be at home versus Conval on Wednesday, and girls' basketball will be at Concord Christian on Wednesday, as well as Alpine Skiing having a meet, as typical, on Friday at King Pine. Um, the Empty Bowls charity event, uh, will be this Friday at Kingswood Regional High School. Uh, possibly if you change some musicians from the Kingswood Music Department, uh, so be there, support a good cause, and hear some very nice music from some of my peers. Um, additionally, this month, uh, the Kingswood Student Council will be holding the annual Winter Spirit Week. Um, at the end of this month, there will be an assembly on Wednesday the 21st with games for all the students in all the grades, and additionally, the lip sync assembly on Friday the 23rd. Um, the elementary schools just last month wrapped up all of their, uh, winter sports activities, and unfortunately, I didn't get too many firsthand accounts of that, but I did hear from my little brother that it was quote "very fun", so, you know, that program continues to show success. Uh, and next month, um, Kingswood Theater will be having its public performances of Shakespeare and Love on March 8th and 9th, so be sure to be there to support the reigning state champions. And the Kingswood Regional High School and Middle School Arts Night will be on March 21st. There will be band performances and chorus performances from both schools, as well, um, as pieces of art hung up in the lobby for everybody to be able to see. So be there, uh, be sure to be there to support, uh, young artists. And that is all I have for this month.
Thank you very much, Elliot. Great report. Okay, uh, moving on to the superintendent's report. Uh, first item on the agenda is the new strategic planning presentations.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I'm Mike Baker, and I was asked here tonight by the superintendent to give the process of what the strate- strategic planning group did and how it went. Um, a little bit about myself, I'm from Ospey. I've had one child graduate from Kingswood High School, and another child that has entered. So I've been a part of the school district for about 15 years now. And luckily enough, the superintendent asked me to be on his board as the parent, um, kind of outside individual, because the rest of the planning board was, was board members and educators, so I was kind of the outside guy. Didn't know how I was going to feel about that walking in, but those, uh, fears were quickly washed away because everybody was very, very nice and, and open to hear my suggestions, which was always a fear when you're not necessarily a part of that educator group walking into an educator's meeting. So the process of it was actually pretty outstanding in my view. Um, it started in September, and every other meet, every other week diligently, we met and discussed what was happening, how we were doing, how we were going through, gathering information. And I think the, the biggest surprise, I don't, I wouldn't say it was a surprise, but, uh... a surprise, but, uh, a warm feeling in a parent's heart is the, the survey that went out to parents in the community. And also, the, um, focus groups, short talk that they actually did with students at the district from grade four and up all the way to the high school level, so every, from elementary, middle school, and the high school, were all involved in the process of making this plan, which was a really awesome thing for a parent here, and also, not just the hundreds of responses we got from the, the surveys, but also incorporating all those responses, even the, the one-liners that were the, "Well, that was only one person." Well, if it's one person, it's gotta be more, so we need to incorporate those one-liners into what we're doing because it's about those that makes the most sense. Yes, the majority is the majority, which is great, but that one student that we could help, because that parent needs help, in that certain aspect, whether it be belonging, whether it be wellness, whether it be academic achievement, which is the ultimate goal, this plan has got a path for all of that, which is a great thing for me because obviously, I'm a parent, and the ultimate goal is, can my kids do better? Absolutely. No matter what level your child at, we all agreed as a group that there's something more that can be done. Another path for this student that may not be going to college, but they could be a welder. How do we get that child on that path on what he wants to do? And this plan is, if anybody could, a parent, myself, put a stamp on it, this is it. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them the best I could. If not, anybody? Nope? Hearing none?
Any, any questions right now? If, if not, we'll...
Maybe you go after, you can ask after it, anytime. We'll pass it on to the superintendent now.
Thank you so much for your input.
Thank you so much, Mike. And I'd like to acknowledge we have several team members among us, uh, so, the strategic planning ca- uh, team, uh, Stephanie King from the board, four members are from the board, Jim Pittman, Charlene Seibel, Mary Schilleriff, updating the board on a monthly basis all fall, myself, Heather Cummings, Dr. Vills, and our principals Andrea Fornier, who is here, Kelly Colby Seavey, who is here, also Sarah Strass, English teacher and academic coordinator from the high school, Laura Crane, head of school counseling from the high school, Michael Baker, parent, um, and our, our student representative, Ryan Osgood, who we couldn't have done it without him, he just contributed so well. So what I'd like to do tonight, um, my name is Caroline Ericalian, superintendent for Governor Wentworth Regional School District, what I'd like to do is just give you the highlights of this plan. Um, it was an, it was an absolute, um, labor of love, I, I think I can speak for the committee. Um, so for those of you in the community who are not aware, um, this process began in August, when the board got together at a retreat, uh, with, um, our facilitator, Mark Dolan, from the New Hampshire School Board Association, to identify focus areas. And through a series of activities, the board identified four focus areas, which I will get into. From there, we created this team, and, um, to represent different positions, to represent different towns, uh, and different stakeholders, so we had that input, um, on the team. But as, uh, Mr. Baker just explained, this team was not the ultimate decision maker, this team was really the vehicle to funnel in the input from the community, from our stakeholders, from our students and our staff and community, um, so that we could have a comprehensive plan that highlighted strengths, but, um, also recognizes, um, where we'd like to begin. You know, we could probably think of twenty things we could get started with, but we had the challenge to narrow it down to four areas and then decide, okay, what then can we do within four or five years? So there's so many wonderful things we can do, so many wonderful places we could start, um, but we, we had to get it funneled down to four areas and what we could do within four or five years. So, the first area is student wellness. So you'll see in these areas, um, we have a theory of action, it's kind of the rationale for the, for the focus area, and then the goal followed by strategies. And the strategies often start with an audit, or an assessment, or a plan, and those pieces will help the subsequent strategies, so they're in chronological order. The first focus area being student wellness. Keep going. Right there, thank you very much. If we empower students to persevere physically and mentally well and to build healthy relationships, including identifying and meeting their mental health, nutritional, physical, and social emotional needs, then educators, administrators, and families will work together toward common goals, and students will be more prepared for life's challenges. The student wellness goal is that Governor Wentworth Regional School District will identify and support student wellness, including mental health, nutritional, physical, and social emotional needs. How we will do that are outlined in the strategies. So the first strategy is about gathering data. We need to gather data, we need to identify it and analyze it in order to understand what we have in place and where we need to move forward. We were not going to know, we were not going to have all these answers, um, in these six months with the, with the strategic planning team. We need to have the people who are on the right, the responsible persons, to begin the plan, gather the data, bring it all together, um, and then decide where we're going to move forward. Some of those ideas include, number two, propose a district-level student wellness coordinator. Understand options and feasibility of providing nutritious meals to all students through public and private partnerships. Also to collaborate with local drug alcohol prevention coalitions to strengthen drug prevention efforts. And some of those success, success measures, including developing a student assistance program at the middle school and high school, and employing a student assistance program counselor through grant funding at the middle school and the high school. That's focus area one, student wellness. We could scroll to focus area two. This is a culture of belonging. If we can create a culture of belonging to help each student to access their belonging, find their place, and value independent thinking, to include building relationships within all schools, improving transition into and out of middle school, conducting professionally-created equity interest audits, consistent P D training on diversity, equity, inclusion, partner with staff to instill a sense of pride and community, involve the community, and create focus groups recognizing strengths, assets, and successes, then educators, administrators, students, and families will foster a sense of belonging and inclusivity for all students, and students will feel valued and safe. The goal is that the district will create a culture of belonging that fosters equity and values individuality, whereas each student feels safe, finds their place, and makes healthy connections. This goal is achieved through strategies such as, first, by late fall of 2024, because we would like to be aggressive about this goal, conduct a professionally-created equity and activity audit that examines opportunities for students within and across schools. Um, beginning the next school year, improve diversity, equity, and inclusion practices across the district through district-wide D E I training for all staff, a D E I curriculum review, and other activities that arise from the equity audit. The point is to develop a district equity plan. We will formally celebrate the successes and strengths of students by involving families in student celebrations. By the end of the next school year, increase opportunities to involve underrepresented, underrepresented community members. We will, um, improve and increase the fidelity of implementation of core responsive classroom practices and social emotional learning, unless legislation changes that right, which I sincerely hope it does not. By the end of the 2026, 2027 school year, establish and implement restorative and trauma-informed responses to behavioral issues, the success measure being a reduction in exclusionary discipline actions in and out of school. Focus area three is about family and community communication and engagement. If we implement a comprehensive engagement and communication plan, preschool, through grade twelve and beyond, including the need to assess current practices in relation to our end goal, and continue to implement those that allow for engagement and communication, internal and external, eliminate those practices that don't, and perhaps add new practices that enhance engagement and communication based on stakeholder wants and needs, identification of community stakeholder wants and needs, diverse engagement opportunities, improving accessibility to the school board, regular consistent opportunities to talk with school leadership, then educators, administrators, and families will have stronger trusting relationships and be more invested in our schools and students, and students will benefit from the investment of the greater community. The goal here for the districts will engage, the district will engage and communicate with families and community members based on stakeholder wants and needs to build stronger relationships among educators and families in order to benefit students and schools. My favorite part of this plan, or this goal, is that we must create a plan throughout the year with a family focus group. So we can't just create a plan, we need to hear from families how they would like to receive communication, how they would like to engage in schools. Um, we will create the plan in concert with our work with families throughout the school year, given activities that we already hold, and new ideas from a family and parent group, um, with our administration over the course of the year, so that we can deliver a new communication and engagement plan by the end of next school year. We will provide professional development to staff around family communication and engagement to include cultural competence and guidance on collaboration with families. We'll provide frequent opportunities to families to partner with the school to guide and support their child's learning and behavior. We'll look to measure that by increased family participation in conferences, increased communication about student successes and minor behaviors, as well as a development of in-person and online resources for families. We'll improve communication between the district and school board and the home and the community with timely, two-way, and transparent communication. And by the end of the 26, 27 school year, we will establish and reinforce consistent common language around academic and social emotional expectations. Finally, focus area number four, academic achievement. If we make all essential standards accessible through multiple pathways, engaging academics, including differentiation, knowing student strengths and needs, focusing on growth mindsets and timely interventions, then educators will ensure free and appropriate education that all students are entitled to, and students will have the necessary tools to become successful in adult, in adulthood. So this goal is to increase and improve academic achievement by way of offering multiple pathways. Governor Wentworth Regional School District will offer multiple learning pathways to improve academic achievement and make learning universally accessible to all students. So our first task is to establish a multiple learning pathways task force, and this task force, um, will work to, um, fully implement best practices for differentiated instruction, assessment in classrooms. Um, this, this goal involves so many educators across the district. This could be, um, you know, like a counselor group, or the principal group, or one teacher group at one school. This involves teachers from every level, it involves counselors, it involves administrators, so it needs to be a, a task force who can look at this and bring everybody together and get all of that input. Um, we are also prepared to present our portrait of a learner in the upcoming months. Um, that is under the wing of the academic achievement goal. So the board and the community will hear more about that in the weeks and months to come. By the end of the 27, 28 school year, we will prepare all students for post-secondary opportunities by offering a variety of relevant and comprehensive learning pathways, as our tech center does so well already, and we'll hear more about that later on in the By the end of the 27, 28 school year, implement a robust multi-tier system of support for academics and behavior, truly infusing everything we do together, academics and behavior that includes enrichment. So what I'd like to point out about these four focus areas is that it is, I do see it as a continuum. Students need to be well, they need to feel safe and in a culture of belonging, with an environment where parents and staff are communicating, and are communicating, to finally experience achievement in academics. So it flows very nicely, um, all together, as we work on, um, all of these focus areas simultaneously. From here, um, you know, the board may, um, definitely ask questions of me, of our, um, esteemed committee members. Um, you may vote on this plan tonight, you may, um, decide to take more time with this plan and, uh, consider this a first read and vote on it at the March meeting, um, but this is, um, as promised, a strategic plan presented to you tonight. I plan to update the board, um, about our progress on all of these areas every month in the superintendent district update. Uh, and we also, last note, plan to, uh, utilize the twenty percent, um, of S R three to get many of these first items underway as soon as possible. And that's the strategic plan, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, that was a great presentation. Uh, any questions from the board members at this point? I know there's a lot of information to take in all at once. Yes, Brody?
Yes. No, my arms are short, I'm sorry. I just had one comment and one question. The comment is, I think it's extremely great to hear that there's going to be a team parents can be, so then we can understand how they want to receive, how they, how they want to ask us questions, and how they want to receive feedback from us or answer those questions. I think that's really encouraging, a great step in the right direction, where I've heard from the public, but what, what is an equity audit? I've never, I've never heard the term, and what does that entail, and what are the, um, what does it identify, and then what would that prompt the administration and faculty to do?
Thank you for that question. So an equity audit will audit many things, so it's a, it's a self-assess, it's self-assessment, but I think we would, I need some outside partners to assist with that. Um, it's, first, it's going to assess what resources we currently have and the access the students have to it, have to those resources, so that's, um, they're going to assess a lot of things, so, but this is one example. So for example, it might be, do the students, um, at Tufton Borough have the same opportunity as the students from New Durham to access the classes that are offered in seventh grade? Given what the, uh, the, the trajectory of curriculum coming up to seventh grade? That's one example. Um, it might be, um, other reasons, it could be extracurriculars, it could be, um, elective classes at the high school, that kind of accessibility, that kind of equity audit. Um, it's also going to look at diversity, equity, and inclusion from that lens, kind of big D, we called it, um, where... deed, we called it, where we want to look at if, if our curriculum is representing all of our students, if we are using culturally appropriate language with our students, if we are teaching what we should be teaching in our social studies classes, if our hiring practices are in line. So really, you know, this board just approved that equity policy. It's going to be checking if we are following that equity policy. That's a good starting place, that's a good roadmap to see if we're following that. We could be including outside partners with that to help us with the equity audit, and also we could be including parents with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Tom?
Well, thank you to everybody that was on the team. It was good work, hard work. And looking at this as a layman, I would request that there be a glossary, perhaps, included with it, explaining the different vocational phrases that I don't, you know, I'm not familiar with. And also, perhaps, well, I would suggest writing this as more of a brochure, explaining the four different areas of concern, and explaining the different goals, strategies, and stuff like that in a layman's language, so that anybody can read it and understand much more.
Thank you, absolutely. I think there's the work that's in the plan, but then there's also the work of communicating the plan. And so that is definitely our responsibility. I think that would, part of that would be job one, communicating the plan in and of itself. I can see one of our first steps as creating a timeline and how this all works together in harmony, because there are a lot of year-one items, and some of the same people doing it. So we want to create a timeline of all four to show where we're doing all of the pieces there. So timeline, I think a brochure is a great idea, glossary is also a great idea. So all of this will help us to make it more accessible and communicate it better. So, thank you.
Another thought would be an appendix, as Mr. Chairman described, I think one-line comments, so forth. You can describe one-line comments or one-off comments that you gave as much attention to as you had.
Those were the survey comments that parents had. There was a section where they could put in their own kind of comments, and it was those ones that were off, they weren't the majority, and they were just one parent had one comment about their child that we really didn't want to lose that piece within the plan. And, and those, those are the types of things that we're talking about, not that we want to put out any parents on the spot for making those, but those are the comments that I was talking about, that one parent, that one concern, we didn't want that piece to be forgotten in the big picture plan, because those are just as important as the bigger parts. Can I explain it a little bit better?
Yeah, fine. And that's why I'm including an appendix, excuse me, with me, those comments I had, the surveys themselves, the appendix as, you know, behind it.
Absolutely.
That's fair.
We can provide that.
Okay. And you're going to describe the process, so. Yeah, that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Stephanie?
Thank you, Dr. Eric Killian. It was a privilege to be part of this team, to be in the room where it happened, as I say, with Hamilton. SCU dancing back there. It's, I think, one thing I want to say is I really appreciate the way the Strategic Planning Committee really focused on what the input said from our community, from our student groups, from our staff, from our community. And I, I think it was so valuable to hear those voices and make sure that they, as Micali said, that they were all heard. The one thing I would suggest to the board is that this came together pretty quickly at the end, and I think that the Strategic Planning Committee might benefit from being able to look at it again. There were some late-hour edits that were made and things like that that were added in, and so specifically around how to measure success, and that we want to make sure we're thinking all the way through. An example is the difference between outputs and outcomes, and the Strategic Planning Committee didn't really get enough time to really dig through what sort of measures we want to be looking at and at what timeline, and that the board might be interested in seeing. And so thinking through those outputs versus outcome measures, I think, I would make a motion to allow the Strategic Planning Committee to come together one more time to look through all the, to look through this draft with any other board input, to be able to bring this to you all in a finalized form. I know you probably noticed grammatical errors, things like that, surely, to scrub it out and make sure it's all as best as we can get it, knowing that it is a living document. But I would make a motion to have this be considered a first read and to allow the Strategic Planning Committee to come together one more time to make sure it's exactly as they want. Can I simplify that? The L word, wasn't it?
Could we just postpone it to the next meeting?
I would like to make a motion, make a motion to postpone the vote to accept this until the next meeting.
Okay, so there's, there's a motion on the floor to, to postpone the approval of this document tonight to be represented at our March meeting. Correct? Okay, so all those in favor, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I also was a member of the team and felt very privileged to be among the elite folks that had a lot of really great things to contribute. And Mike, I love it that you're here tonight. You spoke so lucidly about the experience of the team working together, and, you know, it really was very dynamic. And I think for, for those who are all part of it, I'm sure you know what I mean when I say that. I do agree, there's a lot to digest here. I, I think it would be ill-advised to just approve it, no matter how great it is, if we do say so ourselves. But I think having a month to go through and dig into the minutia, ask questions, add your own voices to it, and reconvene next month to actually take an informed vote on it, I think would be prudent.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Mary.
First of all, I just want to add that when I came on board, literally, in April, and I listened to the, and watched the presentation of the superintendent, kind of the state of the schools, I don't remember what you call it, I apologize, something to that effect, and, and I consequently learned to the year you spent, your first year here, in listening and going to each and every school and spending hours and talking with everybody, so taking the pulse, so to speak, and you took that very seriously, and as a new person, and in fourth, I think it was, and, and as a teacher, having gone through so many iterations of school improvements here, there, everywhere, what I see now is this culmination of it that you walked the walk, you didn't just talk the talk. And I mean that sincerely, I don't have to say this, I don't have to compliment somebody necessarily, but I think it goes, it strongly should be said, that you, you, the consistency and the vision, and, and here we are. And I too appreciate the participation of our, the folks on the board, the parents, the teacher parents, the principal parents, so, I just want to put a closing, it was a lot of work, it was well done, and it was all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Brody?
I just have my, 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 one comment, two comments. One is, I think it's good to postpone until the next meeting, so then we can receive public input, right? So I think that's an important part. I know people can provide public input after, but people sometimes have watched meetings, want to come to a meeting, so I think it's good that we wait and allow for some more public input, and any is to precipitate, or to come to fruition, I should say. And then the other thing is, I'm wondering if it would be prudent, after this motion, make a motion, we put this, the draft on our website, so the public may review it, and if people want to provide feedback, that they can then provide feedback. Or if someone comes to a board member and says, where is that document? I can just send them a link and say, it's on our website, you know, come to the next meeting, provide public input, send us an email.
Absolutely.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, yeah, we don't, we don't have to have a motion on that, obviously, but yeah, I think all these, all these items can be put up on our website.
We'll start communicating now.
All right, one more comment here, Stephanie, you?
Just, just to that point directly, Brody, we heard loud and clear from the Strategic Planning Committee, because they put so much time and effort into looking through all the data, that there's, we're not looking for amendments to the goals themselves, but we're really just kind of ironing out some, some of the details and the wording and things like that, but, but not to put it out there to say, hey, do you think these goals are okay, because these are the goals of the board? I think that's fair to say, but saying so about us, too, so.
Okay. All right, any other comments at this point? So we'll, we'll take a motion then to, to move this to our March meeting after revisions by the Strategic Plan Committee and other input from board members or members of the public that may be listening. Okay? Okay, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Jim Piment?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair for the side as well. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Jim, Chair, we remember, terrific. Okay, staying with this superintendent's report, the next thing on the agenda is the deliberative review, deliberative session of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packets, you have the edited warrant with the updated votes. The Article I are the district officers, Article II for raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget, posted with the warrant, or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein, totaling $62,838,424. If this article is defeated, the default will be $61,578,639. I won't read all of the articles, but the school board recommends this appropriation eight to one to zero. Article III is the $150,000 to be added to the maintenance capital reserve fund. This was unanimous, nine, zero, zero. Article IV, raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 for the turf field capital reserve fund. This vote was eight to one to zero. Article V, raise and appropriate $150,000 for repairs and improvements of building and grounds at all of our schools and facilities. This was unanimous, nine, zero, zero. And then lastly, Article VI, for the district to vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $55,080 for a second school resource police officer for the Kingswood complex for the 2024-2025 school year, the school board recommends this appropriation eight to one to zero. Those were the articles for votes. And then as far as school board candidates, the school board member at large, three-year term, term, the incumbent Mary Craig Schiller, being challenged by Wesley Scott Smallich, also running for the three-year at-large position. The New Durham three-years position, Elizabeth Rose Scheckler, is running for that position unopposed. And then for Tufton Borough, we have the incumbent Jack Whitmer, challenged by Guy Arthur Peck.
Okay, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is the charitable donation, so we have two to discuss this evening.
So the first is a very generous donation from Goodhue Boat Company. They would like to donate a boat to the Lakes Region Technology Center. And we do have Jeremiah Burke here with us, as well as Kathy Tetro, principal of the tech center, if you have any questions.
Okay, it's moved, we accept the donation from Goodhue, seconded by Dr. Jim. Yes, go ahead, Brody.
I had a great conversation earlier today with Jeremiah to see what the cost of the donation was, whether or not we needed a public hearing, and it was $10,000. So we didn't need a public hearing, but we did need a vote. But my only request is moving forward, when we get donations, if we could have the monetary value in advance. Obviously, you know, I could call Jeremiah, he wrote a wonderful letter, and, you know, I think it's great, but just for, just, just so we know as a board, so we do need to post a public hearing, we need to do that in advance.
Thank you. The, the total for a public hearing is how much?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Stephanie?
I was just wondering if we could hear more about the marine program?
Oh.
And how the boat would be used.
Okay, so we're going to hear a little bit more about the new marine program.
The start of this adventure was many years ago. Jeremiah and I talked about the idea of creating a program that will be beneficial to the region, and not only just this region, but all across the Lakes Region and the seacoast area. Through lots of research and visiting programs in Maine, a community college program at the main level, we figured out that it might be a good fit for us for the fact that we have a small engines program, which would be a Level One for a CTE program, and then move to a marine tech and a work-based learning opportunity for students who had an interest in this type of a program. Currently, we're running a double block of small engines in order to prep students for that transition. We've introduced and gone through academic affairs presentations for the marine tech portion of that program. Found out today that that has been accepted and is moving forward. So when we did our budget presentations earlier this year, we did not ask for any changes to our budget, for the fact that we were putting in place all of the things necessary to build a program prior to putting it into our program of studies and offering it outright to students. So it wouldn't be for another year or so that that would be able to happen, because we got to go through the budget process in order to put in the costs of a program of that nature. Will we adapt programs and add to them to accommodate marine tech? Yes. It is not just a standalone program, the small engines portion of it is housed with us. Currently, it is proposed that we would use the Goodhue facility as either a way for someone from that facility to come in and train with our students in small engines at the second level, or for our students to work off-site at Goodhue Hawkins or one of the other marinas that we could get on board with work-based learning. So we have a pathway in place, it is not necessarily just a course of, of direction for those students, it is a pathway for them to accommodate their career development needs. Jeremiah has worked diligently with the state legislature, we have worked together with the New Hampshire Department of Education. We have worked together with the New Hampshire Department of Education. We met the Dr. Arcalian this summer, and we had student representatives there that talked about the need of this and their willingness to put this forward and wanting to be a part of that. And I think that, um, the background that we've put into it and the time that we have used to, um, listen to the folks that are in the, um, industry and talking about those needs for this area, it is a resource that has been untapped and waiting to happen for a long time. Um, I recently heard that, um, the Hewitt Center in Laconia is exploring a marine tech program as well, and looking forward to trying to figure out the pathways for that, so we would certainly be willing to help them, uh, negotiate all of those things that we've already accomplished and give them a foot up in that as well. And certainly, that would make it more collaborative for, for everybody in this region. I'd like Jeremiah to speak more about his, um, part in all of this and his work with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I'm very excited, uh, as this vote is kind of another step forward for what we've been working on for a long time. Um, you know, looking at what is available, having grown up here, uh, you know, actually having come to Tufton Borough Elementary, even gone through and graduated from things, but, um, love coming back and love bolstering and helping in the community. Um, and, uh, we did a tour, and we brought some students over to Goodhue a number of years ago, and I asked them, "Hey, did you know that this marina was here?", and most of them had no idea. And, which tells me, and, and because I'm in the industry, I know of the opportunities that are available in the marina industry, uh, not just locally, but the whole Lakes Region, all of New Hampshire, seacoast, I mean, the, the opportunities are endless within the marina industry. And so, uh, additionally speaking on behalf of, uh, the New Hampshire Marine Trades Association, um, which all of these things and, and the program has been presented to them, uh, which this Marine Trades Association makes up of other marinas in New Hampshire that are all behind and support, uh, this program moving forward, because it just, it just helps the youth in the community, and it helps with jobs locally. Um, and so, super excited, you know, there's been a lot of steps, and, uh, certainly we can explain and talk more about, you know, offline, um, if, if anyone has questions. We've gone as far as American Voting and Yacht Council has, uh, curriculum that, that has been established for this type of program. They have textbooks, they have workbooks, they have the resources available, um, for us to adopt into this type of program. Uh, we've gone as far as there's even scholarships that we set up in former employees' names to support, uh, secondary learning. There's, you know, Lakes Region Community College that has the secondary level, um, of, of education within that, and we are always, uh, we just sent four, uh, four employees to manufacturers, uh, facilities to continue their training and learning as the manufacturers develop, you know, new technologies and things. We always have to continue to grow and learn and, and know those things. And so, this is a step through a large career path that's available to students here locally that don't really know that it exists, right? They don't feel like it, they know that it exists, so very excited for it.
One of the other aspects of exploring this kind of a program was, it wasn't just limited to, um, fiberglass restoration, it wasn't just, um, motor boating, it was sales, it was marketing, it was, you know, hospitality, it was all of those aspects of the things that we already have programs that could meld into this type of a facility and, and the partnership that we would, um, share with, with Goodhue and perhaps other marinas around the lake. So it's really a very comprehensive look at what is available locally so that our kids know more than just, "Oh, well, I want to go through high school, and then I want to leave and go somewhere else." And it allows them the opportunity to look around and say, "Hey, you know, this is really where I grew up, this is what I want to do, and I can do it right here." Or if I want to work someplace around the world, I can get my training here and take it with me to wherever else I go. So that's the whole goal behind CTE is to look at a personalized learning plan for continued education, so it doesn't just end at, you know, high school. We have kids who are starting to explore CTE in the sixth grade. We do work and collaborate with the kids in the eighth grade and the seventh grade, and we're doing some cooperative programming with them. And now we have our freshmen coming through and looking around and doing some class work with us as well, and we're moving in directions that are growing the kinds of things that we want to bring to kids in this, in this area. Um, the donation of this boat is, um, and yeah, it's primarily for a marine tech program, but our small engines program is going to use it to start with. It won't just, you know, sit in a, you know, a pole barn somewhere and, and store dust or something, we want to actively engage with it right away. So I would, um, ask you to consider making that part of a donation for us so that we can, um, get our kids, because they're moving for some of it to work on, it's maybe a little different than a snow machine or a lawnmower or chainsaw or something like that. So this gives them that world, real-world application and opportunity to do some things that might get them moving in a direction that's going to give them an opportunity for a career local and beyond.
So thank you so much. Uh, any, any questions?
I'd like to thank, uh, Kathy and Jeremiah, thank you. I'd like to thank both for coming in and providing such a great, uh, background. It's not just a boat, you've been doing a ton of work, uh, to make this a go and concern, and I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I wanted, we wanted to make a careful and thoughtful, um, presentation when we put this forward and, and changed an entire way of doing things in our, in our center. I think that the conversations that we've had, not only, not only with, um, Jeremiah and his team, but with, uh, CTE, New Hampshire, the DOE, and, and all of the, uh, post-secondary programs has been a, a real asset to us, learning how those pathways can be implemented and integrated all the way back into the sixth grade. And granted, you know, Perkins is sometimes limiting, and that's the depth of where we can go, but my experience in, um, in education teaches, has taught me anyway, that kids in the sixth grade make the decision as to whether or not they dive into education and grab onto it and take it very easy, though, well, they sometimes check out, and we need to catch them before they, they drop out or they turn away from education. And we want to plan to see with them very early on and allow them to experience the things that are going to excite them about being a part of what's going on around them.
Any suggestions?
I'm sorry, Stephanie.
Yeah, I want to say thank you so much for all the hard work that you've done for this possible donation to our district and our students. Um, it's really exciting that we're expanding program offerings, and I think that's what we were thinking of, we were thinking of offering multiple pathways. Um, it's, you're opening up a pathway for students, and that's, that's exactly what we are wanting to see more of, and so thank you so much. Um, I had a, just, any other pathways you want to open up, like?
Sure.
That's good. Uh, solar technicians, I have an EV, I would love somebody to know how to work on it. But anyway, I just have one question. Um, you had mentioned working with, uh, the Department of Ed. Have you applied for a Learn Everywhere, uh, like, to be approved in the Learn Everywhere program?
We, we have not, for the fact that we are Perkins and we are CTE, so we work within New Hampshire DOE on the CTE end of things. Um, the Learn Everywhere grant money that goes with that, um, sometimes doesn't come to CTEs because we already have that available through Perkins.
Always thinking, actually, it would be for the Goodhue.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not totally, I might be familiar with that a little bit, is that where they kind of, they give you some, uh, support for the efforts and stuff that we put in, or is, I'm not too familiar with exactly everything.
Yeah, it's worth, it's worth looking into, but if you're a site that is going to be, if students are going to be coming to your site to be doing their learning, um, it's an integral process to stay, um, Department of Education, you could, you know, be, uh, on the official list, so to speak, to be able to provide those educational services on site.
Yeah, Kathy did mention that we would have to be certified as a location, and, you know, we would absolutely do that. But additionally, I would hope that, and, you know, speaking on behalf of, of the Marine Trades Association, um, as the vice president, and there are other marinas that we hope that, you know, would also be on board as a locations, um, you know, as, as selfish as I would say, yeah, we want to, you know, bring them all just to Goodhue, but there are other marinas around the lake that, uh, I think would, this is benefit for all of you, so, and all the students.
Thank you so much.
Yep. A little repetitive, but I also want to recognize the, the pathway, the aspect that is, and that is so tangible, you know, and there's a need, and, uh, there's a, a course for people to follow to fulfill it, and it's a classic example, so great for that to happen. And, uh, thank you for this donation because, I mean, it sounds like it's really going to be the catalyst to move this program forward, and, you know, in a few years, we'll look back and say, "Well, this is a defining moment." And, uh, I always have a, a warm spot for the trades in general, and Kathy, I know you're the choir, we'd be preaching to on this, um, but, you know, this is how it works, and great, and for it to happen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mary.
Just a quick one, to look back to the strategic plan, uh, the student comments, there was more than one about, um, wanting to participate more at, at the, at the tech center there, so, um, at, at a younger age.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have some ideas about how that might become a portion for our younger kids and look for ways to create ZAR programming, things like that, that seem to work. Um, I just wanted to mention before I stepped down, uh, Jen French was a big part of this at the beginning, and, um, just want to acknowledge her work in this as well. It was the three of us meeting in a room, having a conversation about, you know, well, if we had our drugs, what would we do? And this was one of the things that, um, we really wanted to work towards. I'd like to thank her for her efforts publicly for being a part of this as well.
Thank you. Charlene, you have something?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this donation.
America?
We are so long.
That's what we're discussing.
Well, and I'll say thank you very much for your generosity and for the collaborative e- effort with Jen French and, and our principal of the tech center to make this happen.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot we were still discussing.
No, that's okay, that was, it was a long time ago. Thank you very much for your presentation, Chair, and thank you for the donation.
Thank you.
Okay, I won't take an official vote to accept the, uh, the generous donation. Could you, uh, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair Wazai as well, thank you again so much for your donation. Okay, moving on to our donation number two.
Thank you. The second donation, um, the Jacob Dayber Memorial Arts Foundation would like to make a donation to the Kingswood Art Center in memory of a family member who loved to paint during his summer visits to Lake Winnipesaukee. The family would like to donate $5,000, which would be used to purchase two display cases to be placed in the lobby of the art center. These cases would elevate the aesthetics of the art displays in the lobby while also protecting student artworks. One case would be a wall-mounted case to safely display student drawings and paintings. The other case would be a freestanding case to display student sculptures. Um, this case would be similar to one that already exists in the lobby of the art center. And the information is in your packet.
Yes, Jody, uh, Brody?
I'll make a motion to accept the $5,000 donation.
Thank you. All right, Stephanie's going to second him.
I have one question.
Good.
I, I see they donated more money than what the gifts are worth, is the excess, what that excess going to be used for?
Could be installation, maybe if there was any, any miscellaneous.
Or, or free, like?
Yeah, maybe free, there's just the extra cost of the.
Oh, so, really shipping and stuff?
Shipping, yeah.
Okay. Kids.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions on the second donation for the art center? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Wazai as well, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to express great appreciation to this family for their willingness to provide, uh, these, uh, display cases at the art center.
We'll definitely send them a, a thank you along with our, our approval. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lastly, in superintendent report is a request for budget transfer per policy DBJ, which is transfer of appropriation. So we are asking you please transfer $50,000 from the private tuition, um, high school account to a consultant services elementary account. And then also $40,000 from a private tuition account to a public tuition for middle school. And, um, some context I can share is that these are to, uh, provide, uh, support for students, uh, within our schools, um, and programming for a student at the middle school, um, rather than private tuition at an outer district school.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the transfer of funds? Okay, it's moved by Mary?
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Jim Pittman. Uh, any other conversation on this? Okay, all those in favor of transferring the funds, I thought. Stephanie?
Are both of these transfers related to the same case you said?
No, different cases.
Could you say, could you say again what the first one is for versus the second one, then? I apologize, I think I only caught one.
The first one is to provide behavioral support personnel for students, contracted services instead of private tuition, and the second is individual programming for a student, um, rather than private tuition.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor then of the transfers specified, uh, Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair Wazai as well, thank you. Anything else for Chairman, uh, for, okay, I, I don't have any correspondence this evening for, uh, Chairman's report, so we will move right on to academic affairs committee report. Charlene, you're on. Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you, Mike.
Jeremiah, if you want to, you don't have to say anything. This, this will be the board's part, so, again, thank you so much for your donation.
Okay, for my academic affairs report, um, I would like to hear from my colleagues on board concerning, uh, first of all, the, uh, the policies that we recommended for adoption, those are E, E, R, F is in foxtrot, E, and I, K, L. Do we have anyone who wanted, who would like to, uh, discuss suggested revisions?
I'll make a motion that.
These are adoption for first read only?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll make a motion, we have, sorry, we adopted for first read. We don't have to make a motion for.
No, yeah, I think, I think these are just, any, any evidence that, that we want to make, we don't have to make a motion for first reads.
So this would be the time for anyone who wants to suggest any revisions or ask any questions about these policies for, uh, approval.
Are these free? Now that you just mentioned?
Yes.
Do you have much more? Uh, are these three policies you just, uh, recommended for adoption, are they a departure from the original, uh, policies? Are these three policies you just recommended for adoption, are they a departure from the original policies?
Are these new policies or are the old policies that are being revised? These are all new policies?
Yeah.
So these are?
New, E E A R, F E and I K L.
Yeah.
I believe E E A R was, we replaced this policy, but the academic affairs committee wanted to keep aspects of its old policy, but we saw it there, and so it's new, but we've had a similar policy historically.
It was E E A, E A dash R.
Yes, E E A, E A dash R, thank you. Heather, facilities was new, but academic honesty is replacing it all.
E E A, E A dash, some policy, E E A dash R. And I K L is completely, yeah, the academic affairs.
Okay, Tom, Chair? In looking at the National School Board Association sample of policies, they have footnotes, so to speak, that show when a policy was adopted, when it was revised, when it was adopted again, and it refers to cross references of the policies and also refers to the state statutes and rules. And if that applies to any statute, any of the policies, I would highly recommend providing that information, and it's in the sample forms.
Good, yeah.
Thank you, Tom, for that. We have been, as we've been bringing the policies forward for review, we have been adding the legal references, but we do, these three don't happen to have a history because they're new.
Okay.
But we do, Kathy's been tracking that very diligently for us.
Okay, Mike, thank you so much.
Okay, so those are the three new policies for, Stephanie?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question about policy F E, the facilities construction policy for the committee. I was, there was a lot of, I just thought generally the policy wasn't very clear. It's purpose, it's opening statements, there's not only grammatic errors, but I feel like some just confusion around what its actual purpose is, especially if we're revising policy F A. It's not clear to me what F E would serve to accomplish. And so I'm wondering if the academic affairs committee could explain that to me because it wasn't clear from the way the policy was written, what it's, what it would add that's different than what F E would add when declared, when revised, so.
Any explanation for that? I mean, this is outside of our annual maintenance warrant articles and all of that, so this would be a specific facilities construction process. So we want to build a new school, we want to build something like that, or you know, something down the road that was coming. We want a, you know, a full committee, which we've always had in the past, on any construction in addition to a facility or whatever, we've always had a, you know, a separate committee established to go through that process. So I'm not sure exactly what the meaning for this policy is necessarily, but if somebody can explain it to me.
Okay, F A, sorry. Yep, sorry. So policy F A has some, this is recommended by the school boards association based on House Bill 365 that went into effect on June 25th of last year, so June 25th of 2023, regarding long-range capital improvement plan reporting. So that's why F A is being recommended for revision to reflect that change. And then F E is not required or recommended. It's an optional policy that the group felt it didn't hurt us to have the support so they need to present it to be maintained in the policy manual. But it's not in conflict with that day?
No, I can see it's not in conflict, it's just in its current state, it doesn't, if I were trying to implement this policy, it would take, I think it would be challenging. So I'm appreciating the task before you, if you're trying to implement this policy. I think it could benefit from clarity, but, or if we have a question, we could meet it.
I think this is a lot different, obviously, than every town, every town in our district, I think, has a capital improvement committee, which is a lot different. That's something that they look at on a, I mean, a 10-year basis on what they anticipate over 10 years. We're certainly not in that type of a mode. We don't anticipate, you know, we can look certainly forward to see if, you know, the school numbers are huge, that huge, you're gonna have to have an addition to this school, an addition to that school. But this doesn't fit into that kind of a category that the CIP committees within towns ordinarily would state. They do longer-term projections. And even the CIP committee in Tuckamoreau calls me every year and wants to know if there's anything on the document for the school district as part of their CIP process that may affect, you know, what Tuckamoreau's portion of the tax bill might be. So I really don't think this is the necessary piece, but again, if somebody can explain why it isn't, just, I mean, I understand the A, F A, but I don't really understand the need for heavy.
I think that if I'm remembering the conversation correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the conversation about F E was that the superintendent, this is specific to the superintendent developing a plan, and I think the committee just felt it was an important thing to keep in the policy manual, given that this is specific to the superintendent adhering to these five items that the school association determines.
Well, you know, it's like number five, we do an annual, have our deliberative session every year. We already do that as part of our standard process, annual report reviewing projects underway or completed. So, you know, and those are, those are part of our $150,000 warrant, or for the most part. So I guess I'm just a little bit confused. But this is first read, so.
I'd be happy to get a page out of the policy manual.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, if I remember some of our discussions with the academic affairs committee, some of it was the fact that we liked the idea of an annual six-year capital improvements program, where in the other policy, it just says to update a long-range capital improvement program for the building maintenance committee to do that. And I feel as if there's aspects of this, F E, I do agree it's redundant, but that would force us to, as a board with our administration, to do more capital improvements planning like the other, like municipalities, our school district do. We have a lot of facilities, we have a lot of schools, and I do think they are aging in some aspects. You know, there's aspects of those buildings, burning, restructuring, you know, for the useful life, and it's something this district should be doing a little more, and the board should be involved in that. And I think there's also the aspect of a community-based advisory panel that members of the academic affairs committee like. So maybe there's ways to take the section three, or some of these, you know, these bullet points, these one, two, three, four, five, and F E, and integrate them into F A. So it doesn't seem like we ever done a loss, if we're keeping some of these useful aspects of how we historically supposed to make for our infrastructure.
I guess I'd be comfortable with that type of merging the two pieces together to make one cohesive policy.
So what do we need again? Yeah, probably on our next meeting.
Yeah, that motion would be a second, obviously, but if this goes back to academic affairs, then they can bring that revision back.
I'm wondering if, because I know we want to adopt the F A because of the state mandate, so I don't want to hold up that process. So I'm wondering if there's ways that we can ask the administration to integrate some of these things before our next meeting for the discussion at second read, you know, these points, one, two, three, four, and five, and we need to integrate those into F A. So then we're not, we're not slowing up the process of the state's mandates.
Okay, hang on a second.
You can, you can still approve F A. So at second read, you can vote to approve F A, and then you can say, you can, you can vote to not approve F E and then ask to move F A to academic affairs for another read. So if you, if you don't want to hold it up, you can approve it, but you can still make another motion to send it because the next meeting would be in March.
I think that seems reasonable to me.
Thank you. I think that makes a lot of sense. Okay. All right, can we move on now to number two, recommended for revision? Okay, question about I K L before we move on?
So I noticed in I K L, and I know it's a student policy, but I'm wondering, did the academic affairs committee consider teacher responsibilities? Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of language in this policy that suggests what teachers are responsible for. And it does put a lot on teachers to define and teach relative to citations and what is, is it plagiarism to design assessments and things that will reduce, you know, reduce the opportunity for academic dishonesty. But I didn't know if that was considered, or if it should be considered in this policy or if it was considered for another policy. It seems like there's enough in here to warrant it. I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not completely understanding what you want us to do.
That was my question too.
So the world of AI in particular, and how AI is affecting education, I imagine that this policy will be revisited more than once in the near future. And so I think we absolutely need this policy. It's kind of alarming to me that we haven't had it on the books until, until soon. But I think when I was looking through sample policies relative to particularly generative AI, which is becoming a very influential element in education, and the parameters around using generative AI to support education versus to, you know, be in lieu of and to diminish education. I think there's a lot of work that we need to do to, you know, from a policy perspective, to think through what might that look like in terms of expectations for, for staff as well, not just for students. Because our students need to be, without those, really critical teacher responsibilities to craft valuable assessments that limit the opportunity for AI assistance to contribute meaningfully to student success, I think. These are, these are my thoughts when I was reading this policy. So this is not, I'm not making a specific suggestion right now, but just considerations for us as we move forward in this chart of territory.
Okay, Brad, what will you speak?
I see what you're saying, but I also, you know, teachers are a academy, a myriad of mandates, and they only have so much time where they're supposed to provide instruction and prepping. I wonder if, I mean, I question whether or not the board should be also directing staff to be also like, you know, I just, I don't see how, I mean, staff could spend hours trying to, you know, to cross-reference all the sources, and I assume staff are cross-referencing sources because of academic honesty. But, you know, I just, I find it hard that we add to this policy also an expectation for staff, especially outside of the CPA too. It could require additional work. Plus, I'm always, I'm always hesitant to start adding things outside of the CPA as manuals from the board that aren't required by state law. So, and also deviating from what's been reviewed by the National School Board Association's legal counsel. I mean, that might be something where maybe that's something needs to be addressed as part of the CPA, as part of the prep period, that they need to do that, but I just wouldn't feel comfortable with the policy that they have to do that, so.
Okay, all right, without any, you know, specific changes to this particular policy, this is first read. Charlene?
Well, I would just like to point out that, I mean, I think because, looking at number two, and even number three also deals with AI, it looks to me that we already have a piece in there for teachers, and it says teachers will provide general instructions related to the acceptable use of AI tools, but students are expected to obtain clarification from the teacher. They are uncertain of whether and how AI tools may be used on any given assignment. And then under three, plagiarism, we're also referencing AI tools. It says teachers should provide clear instructions related to the applicable standards of attribution and citation for a given assignment, but students are expected to obtain clarification from the teacher if they are uncertain of the applicable standards. So that seems to me that we have indeed incorporated a piece requiring, you know, requiring teachers to explain these things to the students. So I would, I would tend to agree with Brody that, you know, we don't want to stray too far into mandating things that would be outside of the CBAs. Any other discussion on I K L, or maybe move on to the next one?
Yeah, let's move on to the next section.
Okay, under recommended for revision first read, we have E D G minutes, E E B, athletic transportation, F A, facilities development needs, G B C D, background investigations and criminal records check, I H B A A, section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, J L C, school health services, and K C D, public gifts slash donations to schools. Did anyone have any thoughts they want to share regarding potential additions?
Just one comment on E E B, if I may. The revised language is much better, so thank you so much for clarifying that policy. From the first round, we looked at it. My one concern was, as a parent, the 24-hour notice may be prohibitive. If a parent is able to get out of work and, you know, get out of work early and go to a game and would like to take their child home, and is standing there wanting to take their child home, but they didn't give 24 hours notice, they can't take their child home. As long as there's a written email and the parent can show the written email, please let that be okay.
Go ahead, Brody.
We, this was, I believe, postponed from last night. We have some additional edits, Stephanie, the E E B policy, and what we did is we included some of your, some of the additional edits. I think it provided a few school board meetings, and then we directly asked the athletic director what the current process is, and the athletic director and our coaches required 24 hours in advance so they can plan for transportation purposes. So that's how, I mean, that's how it's been since I was in, I was in 2017. I mean, you were there even longer ago, was it like that? Oh, they needed nine horses, that would make sense, okay. So 24 hours of probably for that, Stephanie. I think 24 hours is more than fair, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, hang on a second, we'll get some professional down here, then Tom will get you one. We'll get some professional down here and then talk and get to you.
I just, I wanted to point out to Stephanie's question that Erin did communicate that they use sort of like a blanket statement at the beginning of each season where the parents can say, I will, you know, be attending my children's games whenever possible, would like the option of taking them home. So there is, even though there's the 24-hour notice, if that's not on record, that parent certainly, if they show up at the game, they're able to take the child home.
Oh, that's not in this.
That one I realized that.
That's the practice that has been instituted to, but I mean, you can certainly incorporate that into the language.
That would probably be something to incorporate in here if the, if the parent can make that statement, is that making that statement upfront at the beginning of the season? In a written document, then that kind of move. Right, that would be a prior request.
Can I just say something? That would be a prior request.
Okay, Charlene?
Well, I'm just wondering if the line, exceptions to this policy may only be made by the athletic director in consultation with the principal, and special circumstances must be arranged ahead of time with the athletic director in writing via email. I'm wondering if that doesn't allow, you know, for some latitude. For example, it's common sense if a parent shows up at the game and, you know, it's obviously the parent, and if it's, unless there's a custody issue, in which case, you know, there would have to be some kind of, you know, looking into that. But in general, at least with all of my children who participated in sports, it was quite often that I wouldn't know ahead of time. And so there was never an issue with me being denied taking my child home from the game in all years we participated in sports.
And Brody?
I think my recommendation would be now that additional information Heather provided, it might make sense to add to the third paragraph a clause regarding exceptions to this policy may only be made by the athletic director in consultation with the principal or if, I don't know what the name of that form is, but whatever form they're filling out. And then we attach that to this E E B, E E B dash, what would we call it form again?
E E B dash E.
E E B. So I'm wondering if we do that and then we just take the form that these parents are filling out and we have it in policy. So that kind of solves Stephanie's problem. That is how they're doing it. I don't want to inhibit from what they're doing if it's working. We just should have it in policy so there's general expectation for the entire public.
Yeah, I think you really have to be clear about how you board this because I read that last sentence, special circumstances must be arranged ahead of time with the athletic director in writing via email. That could be an hour before the game. If that's what we're doing, the 24-hour notice may doesn't need to be in there if you're going to allow that exception. You know, yeah, I think it's, you know, if there's a blanket statement at the beginning of the season that you're going to be at the games and you're anticipating picking up your student, that's one thing. But special exception could be 10 minutes before the game. And you have an email with the athletic director and not knowing any of the circumstances, all of a sudden, you know, take your child home. It's kind of getting careless.
So I think the language in this policy allows for some of those exceptions and that we will remove, you know, whether it's asking an hour ahead of time or the blanket statement for the season. What I want to caution the board is to not have the 24-hour notice. What we don't want is for it to be so, you know, soft that after a game, you have, you know, seven, say it's seventh grade and you have 30 kids going up to the coach, I won't be on the bus, I'm going with my mom. You know, didn't you get the email an hour ahead of time? Then that coach, they're not going to have who is legally allowed to pick up that student. Meanwhile, there was an email somewhere and we already got the bus. So it's really important to have the 24-hour rule while allowing for some exceptions because sometimes a parent does go to an away game and they want to grab their student after, you know, their child afterward to go somewhere. So I think that is, that is in here. And I think, you know, this gives the athletic director and the principal permission to allow exceptions while we still hold that 24-hour rule because we want to keep it, we want to keep it as safe as possible and feasible for coaches. This is not even to mention the camaraderie that happens on the bus on the way home. So coaches like it when the whole team gets on the bus and leaves the away game and they, you know, they're coaching on the bus and then getting back to the school. That's a big part of, you know, after an away game. So I'd be remiss if I didn't bring that up. But it's really about safety in the 24 hours.
Yeah. My question is then, should we be having this blanket statement at the beginning of the sports season? Should I even, are we going to continue that as a practice? Because it sounds as if we're saying it's not good. I mean, and I agree with the camaraderie too. I remember when I was in high school for the hockey team, we even took the bus to home games because we felt that means perform better.
Apparently it's in the handbook as it is now, but Stephanie?
I can say as a parent that does not live in Wolfboro, picking up a child after you attend a game and having to drive all the way to Wolfboro can add an hour to your evening of driving to pick up your child. So there is, there is some significant benefit to parents being able to bring a child home from a game if they live in Osiphe and the games in Conway instead of having to drive down to Wolfboro and things like that. And there is a drop-off for some, for some games, but not for all. And depending, we have a lake and depending what side of the lake you're going around, where the drop-off is going to be. So there needs to be an option for parents to pick up their children just for the sake of saving dozens and dozens of miles of driving. But I like the idea of, Brody, what you're saying of including the language. So at least 24 hours notice, Dr. Eric Kelly, you're saying is very important for safety and I respect that. Or through a blanket permission to pick up their child, given at the beginning of the season, would cover, it would seem to cover that. So I think we can make that suggestion.
Charlene, I know we could, you know, we could certainly make these, that motion at the next meeting.
So I just wanted to point out in the policy that after the 24-hour section, that I think we can agree is necessary for safety reasons, it says, the sentence, it is permissible for a student athlete to be dropped off at a designated area other than the return to school, provided that there is a prior email request from the parent guardian. And there doesn't have, there's no timeframe required. And so it seems to me that the concerns I just heard are addressed in the policy for that sentence. Well, I mean, if you don't, you know, if a parent who lives in Osiphe and the games in Conway, all they have to do is send an email request saying, I'd like my child dropped off at wherever rather than going all the way back to Wolfboro. I mean, to me, that covers it. So I don't, I guess I'm not understanding what it doesn't cover.
The great area is all of the exceptions in the bottom where exceptions can be made. But I think there's very little point where, you know, you, do you want to have an email, several, say several emails sent to the coach? Oh, you know, you're driving, driving from Conway back to Wolfboro. Oh, my kid lives in Osiphe or Tuffamoro or Effingham, you know, can you run my kid off at Effingham School instead? You know, all of them, and those requests come in an hour before the end of the game.
Yeah, it's all covered here, special circumstances.
I just wonder if the special exceptions is too broad that we read more problems than a...
Jack, I kind of agree with you, Jack. And this whole blanket statement where the parent can say, well, I gave you that blanket statement three months ago and I'm invoking it now at this moment, like, that's extremely broad and at random times, people can just be like, oh, you gave me the blanket statement. All right, you know, like, I'm confused how this blanket statement even came about either because I always remember you had to tell someone 24 hours in advance.
All right, we're good.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just...
I took the liberty of saying blanket statement, trying to summarize the areas. So I think we can clarify by giving, for example, the, there is this use of a statement email that is provided to the A D and to the coach about if I'm attending a game. But I think we could say in the special circumstances, for example, if I have, you know, communicated to the A D and principal or, excuse me, coach during the season, I would like to bring my child home from the game. Because that is specifically the scenario that you just laid out for us, Stephanie. That's exactly what Erin's talking about. The idea is not to make it difficult for parents to base their choice. So maybe this, maybe we can work on a, for example, inclusion into the policy to make it clearer and less broad for second read. If that's...
And we're good with that?
So am I clear that what we're going to do is momentarily table this till the next meeting where we are going to add some sort of examples? Or are we good with adding examples so, you know, we can move on to discuss the next policy? Because we're not voting on anything tonight.
So we can email some language if Stephanie would like to make that motion at next read. So we can email you the example so that it'll be available to you to make a motion for second read.
Okay.
All right, we're good with that? All right, let's move on.
Okay, are there any discussion, is there any, excuse me, discussion to be had about policy F A? Moving on to ones for withdrawal, is that my understanding?
We're still discussing the revisions to the first read on the revision section.
Thanks for sticking in here, folks, with me. Policy K C D, I just had a question. What does men, at the end of the first new statement that was added, personal services provided without consideration? What does that mean, folks?
That's like an in-kind donation. Someone, for example, they built you something. It's like gift of labor. That's at least how I interpret it. Personal services provided without consideration, like, it's not, there's no, like, you're not going to give them something back or there's not some kind of prior agreement or just...
Oh, without an expectation for compensation?
Exactly. That's how I interpret it. I mean, yeah, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's, it'd be like if someone was like, hey, I want to help you guys, I don't know, fix this window. It would look nicer if I fixed it.
Okay, I did not read it that way. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on those policies?
I did have a suggestive revision for, well, it's not a suggestive revision. Under K C D, we had, if we, if you look down at the very last bullet, what we had discussed in committee was that it should read not be in conflict with any provision of school board policy and/or state and federal law. And I think that would just fill the cracks because it's currently states or state and/or federal law.
Yep.
So it should be policy and then strike or replace with and/or, and then after state, strike and/or and replace with and. Which will be discussed.
Okay.
Are we ready to move on to policies such as?
I think we are.
Yeah. Did anyone have any questions or concerns about the policies that are recommended for withdrawal?
Are you hearing that?
Okay. So last but not least, I would like to make a motion to reconsider policy D B J. And since I voted in the affirmative, I can make that motion reconsider. Policy D B J is the transfer of appropriation policy that was approved at the previous meeting after chairman Wimmer raised the level, the trigger level from $5,000 to $20,000. I would like to make, I'm making a motion to reconsider.
I'll second the motion. Dave, just moved to second to reconsider the motion. What was the policy number?
D B J, don't promote to...
Okay. What's your, what is your?
What I would like to do is, I would like, oh, we have to take a vote to reconsider first, don't we?
It's not non-debatable. It's debatable.
No, we're debating. So you could speak back there.
Okay. What I would like to do is have the amount, the trigger amount for board notification to be at $5,000, which was what the academic affairs committee had originally brought to the board.
Yeah, I mean, my personal opinion is I still think that's too low on this, on the general size of our budget and the amount of money. Just like now, we had $40,000, $50,000 required to be moved. Something smaller than that could certainly hold up a process that might be necessary. But that's, again, that's just my opinion and I've seen that, that level, certainly from the county level, being a disaster. But why not the county? So that's, that's just my opinion if some sort of board reducing the amount from $20,000 out of by. Mary?
Being the movie here, can you give me the rationale for wanting to revert back to five?
Wasn't the policy suggested by the New Hampshire School Boards Association, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that it was a policy that came directly from them.
You are correct.
And I don't, I don't know that there was a rationale provided by them. It, you know, it was recommended by the School Boards Association and, well, it was, it was, there was a sample policy as I...
Was this talked about in the fact that very few things, most of it's more than $5,000?
At the committee level?
I just know it came up. That's what I heard, that's what I recall.
Yeah, I mean, I remember we were told only two line, I mean, two line item transfers happened each year that were over $5,000. And we had two over $20,000, the meeting right after we adopted the policy.
Was this the...
Yeah, this meeting. So I would personally, I was surprised I never thought we'd actually ever have a line item transfer come before us based on the way it was described to us in committee as a full board. So I'm kind of inclined to support Charlene's motion. Well, I did, I seconded it, so yeah, I am inclined.
I think I'm inclined to, I had the same feeling that you had, Brody, which was I never expected and then certainly not in the very next meeting to have $90,000 moved around. And so I think, I think it's, I think it would benefit the board to understand how money needs to be reallocated so that they can be better informed participatory in the budgeting process, which is one of the core duties of the board, so.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
I would just add that $5,000 is the amount recommended in the sample policy. We can always change that amount, but that's, the original is $5,000 through the New Hampshire School, New Hampshire School Boards Association.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, the motion on the floor is then to re, uh, reconsider.
Reconsider.
Reconsider our vote on, we took it at the last meeting on this policy to change the amount from $20,000 back to $5,000.
So we have to make a motion to further consideration, not a separate. Are we, are we agreeing with this?
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yes, we do, we have to make a, we have to take a motion to reconsider first.
Yep, and then we would.
And then we make a motion to change the amount. So, okay, all those in favor of reconsidering the motion, the prior motion? Tom? Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Doctor Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And chair votes aye, so we're back, we've reconsidered. Now the motion, we need a motion to change the amount.
I move that we approve policy DBJ with the original amount recommended by the New Hampshire School Boards Association of $5,000.
I'll second it.
It's been moved.
Eat a dead horse. You can vote me on that.
I've been left here in a second.
I have a second.
Okay, Stephanie?
That was my discussion, we need a dead horse. And you can vote me on that.
Okay, all those in favor of restoring the, the amount from $20,000 to $5,000? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Doctor Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And I will vote for that as well, that's fine. Okay. Anything else under academic affairs?
Not that I know of.
Okay. You, building and maintenance?
Thank you, sir. I have nothing to report on the building and maintenance. I will note that the next meeting will be scheduled for Thursday, April 18th at 3:00 PM at the SAU office, unless we have reason to change that, in which case we'll give appropriate notice.
I'm sorry, there's like 18 April?
That is correct, April 18th, which is a Thursday at Pareke.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing under finance other than vote for our budget in March. That will be just before our next board meeting, I believe. So get out and vote, hopefully support our budget and the other articles coming forward. Nothing right now under human resources. Advanced planning down below, the school break is February 26th to March 1st. Our next school board meeting is at Crescent Lake on 3/11. And there's no school in service voting day on 3/12. So our board meeting is the day before voting. Public input? I'm not seeing any public input. Okay, not seeing any public input, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Brody, seconded by Doctor Jim. All those in favor of adjourned? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Doctor Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Thank you for hosting us, yes.
Chair votes aye, thank you.